All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And due to the governor statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and the current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting via video conference. Those same conditions require barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public is invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda to comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded. Amy, if I could ask you to take attendance and make sure everyone can be heard.
Hey, trustee Brasky, can you hear me?
Good evening, yes.
Thank you, trustee Chris Meyer, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me? Excellent, trustee Nora, can you hear me?
He's not here tonight.
Okay, and next would be trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can.
And trustee Micho.
I can hear you, thank you. Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you, yep, excellent.
All right, I am going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're here tonight for the public hearing for the South Gateway Tax Incremental Tiff District. I am going to open up the public hearing right now. And let me sort of set this up, if I may. Tonight, you know, we have the item number three on the agenda is the public hearing for the new South Gateway Tax Incremental Tiff District located at Lake Cook Road and Route 53. The purpose of the hearing is to hear comments from the public relating to the potential new Tiff, including approval of a redevelopment plan and program designation of a redevelopment project area and approval of a tax increment financing. Information about the proposed Tiff District, including a draft redevelopment plan and redevelopment area map, are posted on the village's website. We're going to start tonight's meeting with a presentation by Lee Brown of Tesco Associates regarding the proposed redevelopment, Tiff redevelopment plan. After the presentation is complete, the board will hear public comment. And anyone who wishes to address the board will have an opportunity to do so. If it makes sense, we'll either use the raise hand function or just ask to speak. And then I will acknowledge you one at a time, and I just would ask that you wait until you're acknowledged before you speak. Please start by giving your name and address for the record. To make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, each person's initial comments will be limited to three minutes or less. After everyone who wishes to address the board has done so, anyone who would like to make a further comment may seek to be acknowledged again and may then speak for up to an additional three minutes. I know that everyone will, but I'll state it to anyone, ask everyone to be respectful, try not to talk over each other or interrupt each other, and try to keep yourself muted if you're not speaking so that we don't have any background noise. I do want to acknowledge that we did receive some written, one written comment or comments from Brooke Bauer, who resides at 2232 RFD Lane in Long Grove. Now, what I'd like to do is turn the meeting over to Lee Brown to present the South Tiff Gateway presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rare. Let me share the screen. Can you all see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, my name is Lee Brown and I'm president of Tesco Associates. We have been preparing this presentation originally starting back in the summer of 2015. Tesco was retained to assist the village in the, in the development of the comprehensive plan, which was ultimately adopted in 2018. And those of you who were involved in that process certainly remember that village finances were a considerable issue that is included within the comprehensive plan. And one, chapter 13, includes a section on village finances, which, under the subheading of investment to achieve development and fiscal goals slash tax increment financing, the subject area itself near Illinois 53 and Lake Cook Road was specifically addressed. And also, the area was addressed with a subarea plan that is graphically shown on that screen. As one of the early implementation strategies for the comprehensive plan, in the fall of 2019, the village asked us to prepare a stepwise scope for establishing a Tiff district for this area. So since January of 2020, we have been evaluating property, going through the process of identifying the characteristics which support the establishment of a tax increment district, making those reports available to the village in a series of meetings we had, both in person and in Zoom. And then finally, making recommendations which were brought to both the joint review board and now to the public at this public hearing. Let me start by including the briefest of Tiff 101, so we're all on the same page. First, tax increment is an economic development technique that allows future property taxes from a designated area to pay for project improvements within that area. And the program lasts up to 23 years. Some things to keep in mind, Tiff is not a tax of itself, and nor does it freeze the taxes of an individual property owner or any property owners within the district. The Tiff is a tool to leverage private investment. Its purpose, therefore, is to use public investment to encourage the reinvestment and future investments in property within the district. And unlike other economic development tools, the tax rates are the same whether you're in a tax district, a TIF, tax increment finance district, or not. So ultimately, the statute, the Tax Increment Finance Act proposes to eliminate blighting conditions or those conditions that lead to blight, promote economic development within a community, and enhance the tax base for all taxing jurisdictions. This is probably one of the best-known graphics associated with a Tiff district, and it tries to establish some basic concepts. First, if you look at this graph as being along the x-axis, a timeline into the future, starting with the year that the Tiff is established, and then moving forward to up to 23 years. And the y-axis being equalized assessed value or value of property within the taxing jurisdiction, within the Tiff district itself. In the beginning, in the starting year, we establish what is a baseline, what is the EAV within the district to be compared to over the life of the district. It doesn't freeze the taxes at that point, it simply says this is the current EAV at the time of the adoption, and increases over time will be measured against that. The difference between what it was at the beginning and what it is equalized assessed value at any given point during the life of the district is called the incremental change or incremental value that would be taxed. The tax rates of each of the taxing jurisdictions is applied to that incremental change, and the funds that are Tiff incremental revenues that are the result of that application of the same tax rates that everyone else in the village pays. Those same incremental revenues are available to the Tiff district to pay for projects, public projects, that will ultimately generate the revenues to pay back the costs of those projects. When the Tiff district is done, at the end of life of the district, and that is no later than 23 years from the start, then the increase in equalized assessed valuation is available to all of the taxing jurisdictions going forward to increase their property tax base. So what we're trying to generate is what's called a virtuous cycle. Public improvements, public investments are made, which encourage private investment. That, as a result, increases the value of properties within this Tiff district, which generates incremental taxes that are revenues able to pay for public improvement to start the cycle again, and ultimately increasing the value of property that's available for each of the taxing jurisdictions going into the future. Two funds can be used for eligible project costs that benefit the district and eliminate the impediments to the redevelopment, including and commonly, public utilities. And these could be everything from underground utilities to street skate improvements to road improvements, the environmental cleanup and preparation of property to make it available for new development or redevelopment, the assembly of property into developable sites, the cost of financing projects. And then specifically, the act does not allow for the use of those Tiff funds for direct funding of private buildings, new buildings. It can provide assistance for the rehabilitation of existing buildings, but it cannot pay for the construction costs of building new buildings. The project area boundaries that's being proposed for a Tiff district are outlined here in red. Generally, Lake Cook Road on the south is the village boundary, and Illinois Route 53, and just a hair of property along the, I guess that's not a particularly technical term, a strip of property exists within the village along the western boundary of Illinois Route 53. And each of these properties shown here are within the village. The Tiff district has to be a contiguous area, so all the properties within the area must touch, and all the properties within the Tiff district must be within the village itself. There are explicitly excluding the Menards Building, which you see here, is excluded from the proposed district. The remaining properties that are in this district show, this one recognized as the Geimer Properties, which includes an existing building and one single-family home at the very southwest corner of the village and of the Tiff district itself. Eighteen total parcels, approximately 60 acres. The findings of our study identify the characteristics that meet the statutory requirements for establishing a conservation district form of tax increment financing, which is to say that 50% or at least one-half of the buildings exceeds 35 years in age. In this case, there are two structures within the district, one of which exceeds the 35 years of age, which then allows for at least three other characteristics to be found, and therefore eligibility for conservation. In this case, we find obsolescence, deterioration, excessive vacancy of property, lack of community planning, as technically established in the act, environmental remediation and loss or relative decline in equalized assessed value within the district. And I'll try to explain these as we go through. Age building, again, the single-family home exceeds the 35 years in age, though the Grimer Building does not. We have 50% of the buildings within the district. Obsolescence is a technical term identified in the act, which speaks to the conditions or the process of falling into disuse or structures that have become ill-used for their originally designed purpose. And evidence on the site includes original design of the Grimer Building and facilities for the garden store, no longer used for those purposes, and some attempts have been made for modifications to the building to meet current conditions. Still, the building itself is no longer usable for its original intent. Dilapidation is a characteristic of the physical defects in the structures which inhibit the reuse or effective use of the property. And there's quite a bit of that, particularly in the Grimer site. Excessive vacancies, both within the buildings and of properties that are vacant and unused. Deterioration includes both deterioration of physical buildings and structures, but also surface conditions that are on the sites which impede the reuse and practical economic use of property. And there are quite a number of both buildings and physical features on these sites that are considered deterioration of the physical nature of property. Inadequate utilities, in this case, lack of access or extent of water or sewer to some of the properties on this, within the area. And this chart, which is even to me rather small and difficult to read, identifies the decline or relative decline in equalized assessed value in three out of the five years in which the most recent five years of assessment. And so you can see in the, in the, in the year 2015, there was a 7.64% decline in the equalized value of the properties that are shown within the proposed district. In 2018, a 20% decline. In 2019, a 1.7% decline. And if you look closely, you can also see relative to the village as a whole, there were three out of five years that, relative to the increased values, or in some cases, decreased value of the village as a whole, the area in question decreased or increased at a, at a rate that makes the project area eligible under the statute. The redevelopment plan includes a description of impact to other taxing jurisdictions. There are, remembering that the value of the existing properties within the district are still available to be taxed by the other taxing jurisdictions. And if their tax rates go up, the taxes within that area also go up. The impacts are described in more detail in the, in the redevelopment plan, but suffice to say that the overall intent of increasing the equalized assessed value ultimately provides an increased value to all the taxing jurisdictions during this time. The statute requires consistency with the comprehensive plan, and as we identified, there are specific references in the comprehensive plan to the benefit of tax increment and specifically noting this area as a potential candidate area. The redevelopment plan includes a proposed Tiff budget. The Tiff budget is based on the likely or maximum equalized assessed value that increase and the available funds that would be generated for public improvements. We have a series of categories of public improvements that may prove appropriate for the redevelopment and assistance to property redevelopment. And we have given a series of range, if you will, of potential project costs within each of those categories. The important bottom line is that the total of all of those would not be exceeding $7,254,000. There is likely essentially a swapping or availability in any given category for more or less than the project costs that are shown here. Remember that this budget and the adoption of redevelopment project itself does not create the authority to spend these monies. Those are done project by project by the village board at the time that those projects would be sought. And the approval of the redevelopment plan does not guarantee that these monies would be made available or would be available for your use. They simply create what amounts to an upper end or a cap on the amount that could be or would be available if those redevelopment projects generated increment. The anticipated outcomes of the project, first, we would seek to alleviate those eligible, those conditions which made the project area eligible in the first place. So the series of conditions that I rattled off, the, ultimately, the construction and occupancy of non-residential redevelopment within the area so that increment would be generated and available for the taxing jurisdictions. Growth in the tax base from an existing equalized assessed value of $2.4 million to an estimated $18.5 million at the end of the life of the district, and growth in annual property taxes to all the jurisdictions from its current $215,000 per year to upwards of $2 million a year on the basis of that increase in tax base. And that is the end of this presentation, and I will figure out shortly how to stop my share and answer your questions.
I'm gonna now open it up for public comment. And I would ask again that you don't speak until you're acknowledged, and that before you speak, say your name and your address for the record. And you can either raise your hand, or if somebody wants to speak up, there's not a lot on here, I think we can manage this fairly well. So you probably have to go off mute or raise your hand to speak. Go ahead, Tony, Tony Dean, you're muted, though, if I could see, ask to unmute.
Tony Dean, 3204 RFD, or Robert Parker Coffin, or, I don't know, I think we renamed the road. Okay, let me get my three-minute going. Well, I'm looking at the, at the future land use map that was in the report, that has the red, yellow, orange, that sort of thing. Question number one, why are the, why is the soccer field listed as agricultural?
Lee, are you able to answer that, or you want to wait till all the questions are asked?
Okay, I have some more questions on that map.
Okay.
Where is the, so, the eligibility requirements, is the single-family house that's over 35 years old, is it in any way dilapidated, deteriorating, or, or the like? Does it meet the eligibility requirements if that was the only property?
Why don't you keep going, and then we'll circle back, so.
Okay. There's lists here, parcels that are yellow that are going to be residential. Those are in the Illinois right-of-way, the Illinois 53 right-of-way. While we believe the road is dead, it is not dead. And in fact, I believe a parcel was recently sold in Long Grove to the Illinois Department of Transportation. So do we really believe that people will either build houses in the right-of-way, on the edge of the right-of-way, or, and that the assessed value will therefore be augmented? Okay, I'll ask some more questions, let me just get them all out there. Who benefits from this? Does Menards benefit from this? They've been unable, what, what, in, what, what enhances the value of the Menard Outlaws beyond what they've been since 2005? I don't need an answer right now, but I'd love one after the meeting, perhaps. Who owns the Geimer property now? Because that seems to be the only property that will benefit from this. Is the parcels that are on the west side of 53, are those developable? Are those in the village, and are those developable, or are they just there for whatever? What role does the village boundaries play in this? Because when we did the Menards project, Menards was trying to, I've got 42 seconds left, Menards was going to go to Palatine, and we had to negotiate with Palatine. We'd sent water and sewer down there, and we negotiated with them without a Tiff district. The Tiff was something that was in existence since 1977. There was no need of a Tiff district to get Menards into the village, and Menards and its sales tax have saved the village's rear end. I'd like to know what, whether there's some threat of annexation, de-annexation that's related to this, because again, that's what we faced in the 2000, 2005 period. How is this going to get financed? As you know, I see in the report that it is possible to have village funds in this. I think that there should be some enforceable, I'm talking to you, Vic, some enforceable structure in these ordinances that would absolutely prohibit the use of any general funds, any open space funds, my famous bet noir, my famous coos celeb, or the sale or pledging or encumbering of that parcel that was acquired to block 53 and is now a soccer field. And I don't think that, that we want to put any of that at hand. I also have a question for the consultant, is he aware of any Tiff district in Long Grove that has not achieved its assessed value increment after it was launched? I.e., did the downtown Tiff district or the Tiff district over on 83 achieve their assessed value goals? And were they subsidized or not by sales tax revenues and various givebacks to the institutions that developed them? I think that's about it for right now. That's all I got.
That's it, Tony, huh? Nothing more?
Right now, I might have some more to learn about while I go through this.
All right, so hey, Vic, procedurally here, that's a lot of questions. Do we want to try to answer those right now?
This is a hearing, it's not a question and answer period, but if the board wants to get some preliminary answers on some or all of those questions, that can certainly be the board's direction.
Do I need to, let me, Vic, do I need to submit all of these in writing, or should I ask someone more formal to do this? Does this, does this get adopted tonight without?
Not be adopted tonight, there's a mandatory wait period, it won't be considered until the 29th at the earliest.
29th of December?
Yeah, and there's a special meeting that's already planned for that night. But I think that the questions that you have asked, like many of them are matters that were already discussed at the joint review board and is, are part of what the joint review board reviewed and recommended to the board.
Okay, but Vic, I read those minutes, and there's nothing in those minutes about any of those questions. So how am I supposed to be informed? How can I be informed if when I read the minutes that were distributed with this meeting's call, there's nothing in there about any of those subjects I just listed? Not one. Are the, are the minutes defective? Or is the record incomplete, Vic?
No, the recommendation is in favor of this, if you were to take a look at what the report says, I think it does address all of those things. It does not, it does not address them in the manner in which you've presented the questions, but I think that if you look at the report, you will see that the, the land, I guess, Bill, I don't want to be, I don't want to step over your plans for the hearing, but in terms of trying to answer some of those questions, maybe the best thing is to try to do so.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
Whether or not they've already been answered.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do it, all right. Soccer field, agriculture.
Been answered in the report, but you guys go ahead.
This is soccer field, why, why is it showing up as agricultural, right?
My recollection is that we're respecting the zoning that is existing, and we have not proposed changes in either zoning or land use as shown in the comprehensive plan. We're.
But it's not recreational or open space, where there's others that are so designated? Why wouldn't it be designated recreational and open space when that's what it's being used for right now? But it's not recreational or open space where there's others that are so designated? Why wouldn't it be designated recreational and open space when that's what it's being used for right now? Is that a change in the comprehensive plan? I'm sorry, I didn't read the comprehensive plan.
I don't believe that the, that the soccer fields are designated for recreation in the comprehensive plan.
And while we're on that subject, what protections are there that the board is willing to formalize that that would not be alienated or otherwise burdened with financing? Or sold? To finance this project?
Well, first with respect to the burden, so long as it, right now, the property is village property, the village has always had since the time it was acquired, the ability to sell it. And that's always a determination for the village board. That said, I don't think anyone has ever had any contemplation of it being sold. And if it's held by the village, it doesn't have any tax impact at all. So it wouldn't be burdened at all by anything regarding the TIF. As far as any kind of encumbrance that the board may be interested in making, that's a policy decision independent of the TIF.
Except that in the report, it says that village assets may be maybe pledged as a means of financing an otherwise unfinanceable TIF. It doesn't say those words, but that's what it implies. As we did in the other TIFs where we had the, had to pledge part of the sales tax revenues and to give the tenants abatements. And what assurance do the village residents have that this TIF district, which benefits primarily one parcel, will be completely self-sustaining? Without contributions or subsidies from the village coffers?
Well, I think it's inaccurate to, to suggest that only one parcel would potentially benefit by this. The, the plan, the redevelopment plan does not stipulate which parcels or any parcels that would be receiving financial assistance through the TIF district. It's possible that the, that the TIF district can be used entirely for financing, public improvements and public right of ways or some other approach to provide assistance in in making the sites more usable, more marketable without necessarily benefiting a single property. It can be done in an area, area wide improvement or to benefit a single property. There are generally two ways that these things are financed. One is that the, that the village can use money, either it has or it can borrow to make public improvements. Or secondly, it can reimburse a private property owner who has made public improvements and do that reimbursement over time as the revenues are provided through the increments that are gained. So sometimes it's done as upfront and essentially a capital improvement and sometimes it's done afterwards in reimbursement.
What are the advantages to the, what do the Menard Outlots gain from this?
Potentially, they gain from both the benefit of seeking area around it developed. Secondly, it could be made available to, to reduce the cost of extending either water or sanitary sewer if that's made available. Or it could be in marketing of property to make it available for redevelopment. Those lots may benefit, but more importantly, the district may benefit by their development. So sometimes properties are included because you can provide a direct benefit, but also sometimes they are included because the increases in their value will benefit elsewhere within the district.
But that they've been on the market since two thousand and five and there've been no takers is, does not indicate to you that they are, that, and that water and sewer were extended to Menards as part of the deal that caused them to be there means that all that is needed is to just send it from wherever it ends at the store out to those lots as well as connecting as it goes down the road over there to, to the old Geimer property. Let me ask you another question. Is this section on the west side of fifty-three developable?
There's a very narrow or shallow band of property that are, that is I don't know, I would be guessing, but it's, it's, it's only about a single family lot deep.
And does it have setbacks and does it have a scenic easement?
Every property within the village has to be consistent with the zoning.
Right.
And therefore it does have setbacks. So it's likely that those property, at least some of those, I believe there are three parcels that we're speaking of. One is directly related to the single family home that is on the, on the southwest corner. And then there is a strip that is more associated with a larger property that's not within the village to the west.
What's the municipality that immediately is to the west?
It's unincorporated.
All the way to past that pond?
Probably to Hilldale.
Palatine is actually over there, it's around Whole Foods, but I don't know where it and Hilldale meet.
Just for orientation, tho- those properties are about two hundred feet deep, except for the residential property at the far south corner. And they are all in same ownership as the property immediately to the west that is unincorporated. There was one of your questions about how does this affect annexation and disconnection? Having this property in the TIF and having the TIF provides at least some opportunities for financial incentives that could bring the immediately adjacent property to the west into the village and it also protects the property from being disconnected from the village. So it, it serves those strategic aspects for the village as well as the potential redevelopment aspects that are outlined in the plan.
And that parcel is thirty acres or more and thus de-annexable?
That property alone is not, but that's not to say that it couldn't be combined with other properties to potentially hit the twenty acre
Or twenty.
Connection, disconnection threshold.
Okay. How will this be financed? Oh, let me ask you one other question. So what's the status of the Illinois fifty-three right of way that runs through there?
Same as it's always been.
Yeah, I would argue that your purpose, your blight problem has been an Illinois fifty-three problem more other than anything else, but that's neither in nor there. I have some more questions, but I'm going to stand down because I'm sure there are.
Yeah, but the one, yeah, no, Tony, the one question though, what's it going to cost us right now? Nothing, right? It's an empty container. So there isn't anything in it right now and and it, it won't cost us anything or it may not even cost us anything period unless it's used, right? It's, it's there as a vehicle.
Yeah, and apropos that, Bill, i- if one were to look at the TIF report, one would see that the the primary focus is that the financial plan is intended to establish a conservative public expenditure approach. And it will be based on a pay as you go approach. And that doesn't necessarily mean that the village will be outlaying monies. It may be allowing property owners to recoup money that they paid in their taxes. There's a variety of tools that can be incorporated with the overall TIF plan and TIF financing to make some of the properties that have been challenges for development, including the Menards Outlots, more accessible to potential purchasers who wish to develop. Although there is accessible utilities, there's a price tag with it. And with the price of the land, the, the two of them have been fairly prohibitive of any development opportunities.
Who sets the price of the land, Vic?
Property owners always do that.
Ah, Menards, no kidding. I wonder. It's been suspected for years that Menards doesn't want those developed. And they have the price on them is sky high plus the re, what's the, so that that's a, a sort of in their own, their own hands. Bill, why don't you let other people?
Hi, Tony, thank you for your comments. I'd like to speak.
One other, which is I would love you to think about doing this. Do you have to do this by year end? The time, it's not a time when most of us are thinking about participating in village affairs, let alone you and your colleagues on the board.
We would have to start over if we didn't do it then. That's the issue.
You have to do it within this calendar year?
Right. And we got kind of pushed up against it how it ended up running the, the way the whole program ended up working out. So. But, but let's, let's move on to, who else has a public comment? If you want to raise your hand or? Hey, Jerry, you want to state your name, please, for the record and address?
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Jerry Song. I live at sixty-sixth Avenue East Hawthorne Woods. Not only am I here to speak on behalf of my parents who are residents of the village of Long Grove, but as a legislative director for the Northwest Suburban Local twelve eleven Teachers Union, IFT AFT. I'm also here to highlight the significant negative impact that TIFs have on our public schools. I strongly oppose the South Gateway TIF proposal. TIFs are tools for economic development. Properties. They become controversial when they're used to develop property that is not blighted. Developed property. TIFs often have a negative impact on other local taxing bodies such as fire protection, public libraries, public transit, transit, our parks and basic operations of our city and county. Public school districts are also suffer because the school district property tax revenue from the improving site for nearly a quarter of a century, twenty-three years. The loss of revenue causes school districts to go back to the local taxpayers for additional funding in the form of higher levies, referenda, new taxes and et cetera. In order to meet their financial demands to operate the district. The timing of this proposal is particularly bad. Governor, Governor Pritzker advised cabinet directors to prepare for a nightmare scenario that includes budget cuts of at least five percent for the current fiscal year and ten percent cut for the next one if Washington doesn't supply the state with additional funds. Illinois voter, voters rejected fair tax, the graduated income tax amendment that Governor Pritzker was banking on when passing the state's budget last May. And the Edgar Grant places financing for the five state pension systems on a steep upward trajectory until the year twenty forty-five. Therefore, not only will our schools suffer from a loss of our state revenue for years to come, but also if implemented, a TIF district will negatively impact our public schools' primary source of revenue, local tax revenue. Placing an increasing financial burden on taxpayers and jeopardizing the quality of our public education systems at this point in time is, in my opinion, irresponsible. I asked Long Grove Board members to vote against implementation of yet another TIF district in the village of Long Grove. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jerry. Appreciate it. Anybody else have public comments? Want to raise your hand?
I asked, Bill, can I ask a question?
Yeah, you could. I mean, I would prefer we save that for when we're convening as a board.
Okay.
If you have a comment, please raise your hand.
Bill, I can't, it, the raise my hand isn't working at the bottom. So.
Oh, you're not on, yeah, sorry. Speak up then. Sorry, Brooke. Go ahead.
So.
Name and address for the record. So.
My name is Brooke Bower. I reside at twenty-two thirty-two RFD, also known as Shiloh Drive. I did provide as you're not, as usual, a fair number of pages relative to this TIF discussion. I want to thank Jerry for her comments. I'd also like to thank Tony for his. I'd also like to go on the record to say that at this point, I find that I cannot support this. Largely because I don't think there's been enough clarity. I don't think there has been enough definition of objectives. I don't see any tangible results described relative to the amount of money that could be spent, which I understand now from this presentation is in the neighborhood of seven and a half million dollars. I, I have spoken with several of the taxing bodies. And they share overall the same issues that Jerry has just described. And you have these pages. So I am hoping that the village will respond in writing. I'd like them responded to in writing. And I did divide them into specific if you will, categories. So I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Brown that the redevelopment plan and the comprehensive plan are aligned. I have provided some information, including PIN numbers as to why it does not align. I'd like to add to Mr. Dean's comments, the single family house that we all keep discussing, I have had conversations with those, with that couple. Not conversations with their dog, but have met the dog. That house is not blighted. So I do not understand why that is even remotely involved in eligibility, other than it is more than thirty-five years old. It is a rented property. So the folks that live there do not represent the owner. I don't know, have you spoken with the owner? Is, is the owner aware that her property, her, her asset is being blighted? In terms of the definite, the definite legal definition of blighted. I also am well aware, and I've got the GIS up, the, Tony, you had asked about the strip that runs along Old Fifty-three. It is owned by the same entity, the same man who owns that, the largest state there. And he's come to the village with some ideas for what he would like to do on his property. And my understanding is, has talked about being amenable to being annexed into Long Grove. That was not in my questions. That's why I'm, I'm bringing that to your attention. Be also relative to the comprehensive plan. It does not align because it's specifically the soccer fields and that property south of the soccer fields were not included in the South Gateway area of the comprehensive plan. So that's why I've asked to know why those were included. I'd like a response in writing. So really, when you look at this, there are five outlots that are available for development that are the Menards Outlots. And really only one building that has some issues, which is originally the Iverson, then Geimer's property. And it has the possibility to be filled and productive within an approximately six to eight month timeframe, depending on actions of the board. I'd like to know also what happened to, and I spent a great deal of time with Eila Township. For some reason, which I think we actually all know, there was a piece of property that had been annexed into the village roughly in twenty, at the end of twenty seventeen, which is now no longer. It has no information, that diagonal strip, which then also goes into the T on Dorothy Lane. Dorothy Lane was at, at issue in twenty seventeen. You have my comments in my page. That should either be removed or there should be a commitment in writing that that will never be a throughput between fifty-three and Old Hicks Road. In terms of the presentation, page, where is it? Page six had the infamous triangular graph. Talking with taxing bodies and some other TIF administrators, that triangle has to be accommodated financially by other residential property owners, business owners. And there's some other zoning areas, but the overlay of all the taxing bodies, School District one twenty-five, ninety-six, the libraries, when you When you overlay all of those and then look at the fact that I believe what you said would be a maximum of seven and a, seven and a quarter million dollars, that money has to come from the other people that are not in the TIF. And I believe that that imposes not only an unfair burden, but one that has not been expressed to everyone else that would have to pay for the monies that are inside that triangle, that are taxable inside that triangle. Um there, they all believe there's fallacy to, oh, they get a bump at the end of twenty-three years. As Jerry said, that's almost a, that's almost a quarter of a century um for an area that just barely, uh and if you throw out the house, which isn't blighted, that people live in and it's quite happily maintained, um it doesn't make, it doesn't match eligibility. So bearing in mind that uh I still have not ever seen what the real purpose of this TIF is, what the expected outcomes are, what it could look like, there's no concept that's been um provided. Uh I I truly believe that there should be other solutions to whatever the purpose and the challenge to the village um in what they're trying to solve.
Brooke, I'm gonna stop you there. Yeah, we've given you about seven and a half minutes, so.
Oh, I set my timer on, it didn't go off because I didn't hit start.
You're all, you're all good. Um I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to give you the time to speak, and um your comments have been distributed to the board already um before the meeting. Um and I know that this meeting's being recorded and notes were taken, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you for the time. I apologize, I didn't hit the buzzer.
No, no worries, Brooke, thank you, we appreciate it. Um anybody else have comments? And if you can't raise your hand, just speak up. I'll give it a second, going once, going twice.
Bill, if there are no others who would like to speak, I have a couple of others I'd like to add to the pile. One of them, I didn't get an answer, but I think it should go into the record. Um what is the assessed value of the downtown TIF versus its initial fix, fixed value? Is that a positive or a negative?
It's a positive. I don't know to what extent, but the overall TIF, um which does include the Sunset Grove Business District, is um a positive over its inception.
I thought there were two TIFs.
No, there's a business district and one, within one TIF, it's kind of a subset.
Okay, and um all right, um and just by the, just sort of not exactly germane, but how are we doing on repaying the open space fund bonds?
Um the uh there are, there have been payments, and there's going to be more this coming year since we refinanced the business district Sunset Grove outside bonds that's held by outside um parties. Uh between that and satisfaction of um the agreement with Sunset Foods, uh that will be um any of the, you know, there, there's a waterfall of where the monies go. And to the extent that any of those are not needed outside of keeping the TIF going, you know, audit and uh legal fees and so forth, and overall, as well as satisfying those, uh the principal and interest, the first place it goes is paying off the open space fund. And that is by design, those are senior in in um payment.
Uh we'll talk later about it, but I know the auditors had a comment about it, and I love to see their audit report on those bonds when we get further into it. Um I think that may be it for me right now.
Tony, I appreciate your additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Um at this time, then um I would like to um close the public hearing. Um and uh and and so that basically the the public comment part of this hearing is closed, so uh then um what I'd like to do then is.
Excuse me, Bill, this is Vic. Do you want to get a motion on that?
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely. So um the motion should state something if somebody would like to move it. I moved to close the public hearing regarding the South Gateway Tax Increment Finance District. Who would like to make that motion?
Don't move.
Uh moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
Uh I think trustee Kritzmeyer beat you, Rita. Um and then Amy, can you take a roll call?
Mm-hmm, trustee Borowski.
Yes.
And trustee Kritzmeyer?
Yep.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
And trustee Nisha?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carried. Uh the public meeting is closed. Now I would like to um open it up for discussion amongst the board members. Questions you might have? Comments?
I I had questions. Um I'll start with with the comments that Jerry Songer made. And Lee, Lee and or Vic, I I think you probably know the answers. Um the, I I know that the traditional arguments about TIF districts are that the libraries, the schools, and and the taxing bodies don't benefit until the the TIF is, has ended or start in or start, well, till it ends. Um there, there being only two homes in that area now, in the, in the demarcated area. Certainly, the the tax monies going to the schools are minimal at this time. I I don't believe that any of that land is, I don't, I don't think we have said any of it would be residential, therefore adding to the school district burden, shall we say. So is, and and on top of that, I I read recently that a a TIF that was just approved, um they they did, they got, oh, I know, it was, was the Melody Farms TIF. Um the, the developers did indeed agree to pay this, the tax, the school districts and the library, at least, um current taxes uh during the twenty-three years. So apparently that can be amended, is that? Are are, is that accurate on my part regarding this particular property?
Uh hmm, a combinations of yeses and nos. Uh first, first, um there are, there's one single-family home in this, uh not two. There are two buildings, but the the second one being the crime, the Grimer Building. I believe that the current, all of the properties inclusive of Grimer and the Menards property and the single-family home, all of those currently generate, uh I believe around two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, all of which goes to the other taxing jurisdictions. And they would continue to have that same tax base and be able to tax that through the life of the district. If there are no additional residential units, and that's, as I understand it, the the land uses are not intended to be residential, they're intended to be a commercial uh in nature. So long as there are no additional residents, there are no additional uh increases in cost to the school district or the library district, etc. And yet they still are able to tax the properties at the same uh base value that they currently exist. Um if there were uh developments that generate children, for instance, and this happens in other taxing jurisdictions, in other TIF districts, if the property is provided assistance through the TIF district, meaning that there's a subsidy essentially, or a benefit directly financially to the project that generated those students, then the district is, the TIF district is required by statute to make payments to the school district to alleviate increases in their costs. There's a cap on that, but that is in the statute that if a project generates students and is assisted by TIF, the TIF district has a responsibility to pay on the basis of a formula that's generated um the cost of those increased students.
Okay.
Um there are other approaches that other uh TIF districts use, which essentially declare uh surplus dollars um that are unused by the TIF district. Those can be declared, but those go to all of the other taxing jurisdictions on the basis of their pro-rata tax rate.
I see.
It's, you cannot write a a specific agreement to send the school district a lump of money uh irrespective of other taxing jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you. So.
Just point out that the map on page nine shows a large triangle and a small rectangle coated yellow, which says, "Single-family residential." So there apparently is a substantial portion that is targeted for single-family residential. I don't mean to be a.
I don't have that.
Are you looking, I, I'm just gonna ask, when you're referring to that, and because I don't know which page nine, I, I don't have all of the things here, but there's the subarea five from the comprehensive plan, and that's got things like yellow on it that includes the developments from uh Swanson and and Demar. I, that subarea is larger than this TIF. The TIF, in fact, doesn't go all the way up there, and so any of the proposed um pins in here are not the same as that subarea. That subarea is a larger piece of land. Is that correct, the way I'm looking at it?
I'm just looking by the map on page nine with the red line that goes around it and then has within it coloring as to what the land use will be.
Right, that that map is taken directly from the comprehensive plan. Uh and it is blown up a little bit from the comprehensive plan.
It's this one, okay.
I think, I think that's what I'm seeing. I got, I've got bad eyes, so that's um, that's not offering a lot. But that particular map uh that is on uh page nine of the report.
Sure, that one.
Is, is the same map that is in the comprehensive plan. The large triangle to which uh Tony's referring is part of the Demar development that is uh on the other side, if you remember, the Demar development was bisected uh by the I dot right of way, and and that has been in part, but not entirely, acquired by I dot. Uh if, there's a smaller triangle that still is uh privately owned um between the development to the east, which is in gray on this map, and the easterly part of that triangle. All of that is zoned for residential, but the part that's to the west of what I dot purchased doesn't have access. And the part that is in the I dot uh purchase area um would have to be sold by I dot for anything uh to come of it.
Does that affect the financial viability of the project?
I don't believe it does.
We made no projections of value based on that development. Meaning that we were not suggesting that there were, there was a generation of increment off those triangles.
This is Ann, that's, this is conjecture on that, but that property originally, we had to annex that in and as part of the P U D from the Demar development, and therefore it had to come with zoning, which until he sold it was residential.
So let's, um other um comments from the board? Questions from the board?
One of the comments, I just have a comment because I'm hearing things about um uh and and reading notes about that this represents a loss of revenue to the taxing bodies. And I I just, I disagree with that characterization of it because it's not losing, it's not generating, it's not revenue that's getting taken away, it's revenue that's getting frozen at that two hundred and six thousand dollar level um on properties that right now, as we said, are, you know, whether it's the Menards Outlets or the Geimer Property, we've had people come forward and try to develop that and then find that for one reason or another, economically, it's not working. Um these are properties, from my standpoint, that, you know, we want to be able to have not just something different there, but something that is uh generating some level of tax that is a stream for the future for the village. Um and then the increment can go where it is. Uh but ideally, what we're doing is we're helping to encourage development um or create a vessel that allows that. It's like saving, saving for a rainy day. I don't know exactly what's gonna come, but we want to be able to have this oper, have this uh in place so that we can help develop those and then raise revenue in form of tax revenue for the village and ultimately, you know, down the line, of course, um in property taxes for those taxing bodies. So I guess I, I'm just, I I don't see it as a loss of revenue. It's, it's, it's not like it's getting taken away. It's not gonna, it's not gonna generate right now unless something changes.
Um trustee O'Reilly, you, you look like you were ready to raise your hand.
Yeah, I, 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 I wanted to say exactly what Ann just said, is, is that it's, it's a, it becomes the base, and the base remains for a period of time and can only improve. And so the taxing bodies actually will, will reap benefits from um whatever kind of development we can, can um create there. Um and then I wanted to address the various questions that have been raised. And are we going to give written answers um to the questions? Um is, is that our intent?
I will look to um uh Vic and Bill Balling, right, um on how to respond here.
That's a matter if the board desires to have responses, uh then we can be so directed, and we can have responses prepared and provided.
Yeah, I don't think you have to get in the weeds on, on, on everything, but I, I think um a, a good reply to the various things that have been posed here would be beneficial.
Any concerns from the rest of the board? I think it's a good idea.
I think that, I would like, I would, I think that would be beneficial for the people who have raised those questions, as well as the others who weren't here or haven't raised the questions. I agree with Bobby, I don't know that, you know, line by line in the weeds is what we're going for, but I think that there are themes here that are important to communicate.
If I might ask, just because I don't know that my notes were completely reliable, if Tony has his questions written, it might be helpful if he could uh forward those to Bill Balling and and then circulated among uh Jim Hoag and Lee and myself.
Tony. The, the, the primary purpose of the pause is, is to allow the village board to understand and amplify the comments that were made and uh do so in, in advance of the vote on the ordinances. So if that would help the board and clarify for the public that participated, um we could certainly put something together. Uh there's not, uh you know, they, there, you know, questions are always, uh you know, in bounds in a public hearing and and uh sometimes they're answered verbally, sometimes in writing. But I, I think the essence of what the board needs to do is really understand the uh the issues that have been raised by the public prior and use this next period to do so prior to the consideration of the ordinances. So if that will help the board, it's certainly something we can put together.
Yeah, Tony, I, I see you're still there, I hope you're still able to hear. If you can send those questions uh to Bill Balling, that would be helpful, so we can move it forward.
I don't have them written out, but I can spend some time and write them out. You may, however, with that request, get some additions.
No, that's not a lot, Tony.
Well.
I have some, I have some chicken scratch on them also. Um I have a question for Lee, I, and and a couple of things. There's been some comments about um alignment between the TIF uh concept and the comprehensive plan. The word alignment, um does that imply identical, or does that imply spiritually kind of overlapping?
The latter.
Is there a definition?
In, in most cases, uh the, the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan or uh the high-level intent of the comprehensive plan, given that a comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document, it is a guidance for the village. Uh the, the alignment, so to speak, and it's not even used, that term is not even used in the, in the act. Consistency is anticipated on the basis of what's the intent of the village for this area. Now, the fact is that the comprehensive plan can be amended as, as uh, as can zoning. And so uh the intent really is for there to be at least uh this document, the redevelopment plan, to be consistent with the public policy elements of the comprehensive plan and not be at, you know, essentially in conflict with what the stated intent of the village is. So I don't think that you should consider it to be um absolute overlap of every element. Uh it is more an issue of consistency with the intent.
If I might amplify just a tad. If I might amplify just a tad, if you look at page 132 of the comprehensive plan, there's a map, it is identical to that map on page eight of the redevelopment plan. The the whole concept, however, is that neither the TIF nor the comprehensive plan ultimately controls how property might be zoned and used. But those are both documents that, working together in this area, should help form what that development pattern will be. The zoning in this instance is roughly equivalent to what those maps show. Tony had asked the question about why is the open space agricultural shown? That's because that's what the comprehensive plan shows it. My, I haven't gone back to check the zoning. I don't know that it's zoned that. I think it's zoned probably RC, but I, is it, is it, I haven't checked that yet. But in any case, that's the the alignment is is not just a matter of theoretical and conceptual. There are some, some basic imports from the comprehensive plan to the TIF redevelopment plan.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but the issue here that Tony and I are bringing to light separately, but surprisingly simultaneously is that the soccer fields and the lot directly south of that are not part of the, included in the map in the comprehensive plan, and that was for specific reasons. And it doesn't take much to understand that that had to do with Route 53. Those two lots are critical. And they are not part of that zone five from the comprehensive plan. So when you continue to say that it's identical or matching, it is not.
Thank you, Brooke, for the additional comments.
Could I ask one more question? And that is, what is the purpose of having Dorothy Lane designated?
My understanding is that Dorothy Lane is not actually a right of way in that area. The red line boundary that is included, the red line boundary is essentially reflective of the parcel lines that are related to the acquisition by the state of Illinois for right of way. And it is not because the plan shows or intends to show it as a roadway. It is simply the shape of the parcel. That Dorothy designation that's on the far upper right probably is inaccurate because there is no Dorothy Lane there. It is actually to the to the east of that.
That also is not true. Thank you, Bobby, for saying that. I'm sorry, I'm just saying, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brooke. Go ahead, Bobby.
So so that little strip is part of the western parcel of property? Is that what you're saying?
It's part of that diagonal part of that diagonal Illinois right of way.
Are you saying that I dot owns that little sum, that little peninsula there?
As far as I know, that is a single parcel through there.
Gotcha.
And it is apparently that leads, my understanding is it is owned by I dot.
Well, that puts gerrymandering to shame, doesn't it?
Well, it's the access.
Hope we can verify that because it's something's not right about that. I that it was, it was part of either the Archdiocese or the Iverson property that was on the on the east, on the east side of the right of way.
My guess is that there was a large rectangular parcel originally, and when the the parcel 14363042, that sort of wedge parcel to the east was acquired or separated or subdivided, that the remnant piece to the north that looks sort of like a right of way was left and not included in the acquisition.
All right, well, we can have somebody verify that, right? That's a great question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, so in, when Tony's questions are are answered and the answers satisfy us or don't satisfy us, how, how, how binding is any of that on a future board?
Well, as is usually the case, policy decisions are not binding on a future board. Policies can change. Things become binding on the village either when we make commitments or when we make formal agreements, commitments that would be enforceable or other kind of formal agreements. And so that is just how government works. That's why we have the right to redress, seek redress under the constitution, because the constitution allows government to change its mind. So the the notion of trying to bind things forever is not intended to be what governments do because policies and needs can change.
Well, okay, so I wasn't thinking forever. I'm I'm just wondering hypothetically, none of, none of that is written into a TIF agreement. Is that, is that correct?
Well, we don't, if we were to have a developer, we would probably have a redevelopment agreement, and that redevelopment agreement would then make binding whatever the terms of that redevelopment agreement are and the commitments on both the developer and the the village side. At this point, there isn't any redevelopment agreement with any party. So there's nothing of that nature to to bind anyone in that regard. What we do have is the the plan, which if approved, which is one of the things that the board will be asked to consider at the 29th meeting, will then set some parameters for what the TIF can be used for. But even within the scope of the TIF, we have a lot of flexibility. If you remember when we talked about this, I think it was in February or March, it was one of the last live meetings that we had. The the notion was that we have a number of properties that, for a variety of reasons, have stalled out. And for them to move from either vacant or continually continually underutilized or degraded properties, we wanted to have tools in place that could afford some flexibility to get them off, you know, out of the starting blocks and off on the on the track to to develop. So that, I believe, was the direction that the board had to to Lee and his team in developing the redevelopment plan that is before you.
Okay, yeah. And and so thank you for for that. So the the answer really is everything is copacetic and or in flux until a a development contract is signed.
Correct. Yeah, and you know, that's not to say that this is just spitballing. I mean, we did have some conversations at at that meeting back in February, and I believe at one of the Zoom meetings, which would have been in May, I believe, where we thought about how might a TIF actually springboard development. And when you have high recapture payments that would preclude use of utilities, remember, we lost that, that that golf.
Irons and woods.
Irons and woods. Their whole problem was they couldn't swing the, forget the pun, they couldn't swing the cost for the recapture. And so one of the things that a TIF could do would be to provide a means by which property taxes paid, to an extent, could be repaid in a rebate or reimbursement. And that would be offsetting whatever expenses they had to get the utilities. There's land write downs, which is a similar tool. Neither of those are tools that require dollar one out of the village's pockets. Rather, they are tools that leverage that incremental revenue to make, you know, to militate the overall cost of development for the property owner slash developer. So those are among the tools we talked about. Not to the exclusion of others, but those I think were identified as being more likely than not, the type of tools we would be using in this area to try to overcome what have been seemingly increasing in historic problems.
Could I add the fact that, as we indicated with the budget, there is flexibility on on how the monies can be used, but there is a cap on how how much money could be used. But also importantly, at the same time, changes to the district, the boundaries of the district. The village could, at a later time, remove properties of, that are shown here from the district. But it can't add properties to the district without going back to the starting point of the of the the whole process that we've just gone through in terms of identifying eligibility and the GRB, and then ultimately the the public hearing and adoption. So to add property is is a very formal procedure. To subtract property, for some reason, can be done without a significant amount of upheaval.
Can I make one comment also? I'm sorry, go ahead, Rita, if you've got a question.
Well, just a last one, I think. Does Menards benefit from this? Or is it, is it just the fact that there would, they would have neighbors, they would have more, more commercial attracting bodies to their businesses, which could then benefit Menards. But I mean, there, there really is no special benefit to Menards regarding this, is there?
There's no direct benefit of holding property within the village until the property becomes more developable because improvements have been made. So it's possible that as a landowner of those outlawed parcels, they will potentially ultimately receive the benefit of making them more attractive to an investor, but they don't get a direct benefit from the TIF district just by holding, holding the property.
No, no, Rita, but if we, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we offer any kind of tax incentive or rebate to a potential developer, the property value remains higher and Menards gets a higher price for that piece of property. So in essence, we facilitate Menards selling those properties.
Right.
Right. So I don't know how that's not a direct benefit to me. That's putting money right in Menards' pocket, in a sense. Hey, can I ask kind of a philosophical question? I liked some of Tony's, obviously, I liked a lot of the comments and questions, but something I wanted to address specifically in Tony's questioning. I don't know who to ask it to, maybe board philosophical question or maybe a Vic question. You know, I had not envisioned this TIF as being something that the village wants to actively finance or put money in, you know, because frankly, you know, if you look at a 7.254 million dollar cap, we're lucky to come up with a point 725, let alone 7.25. So how do we, how do we restrict, limit? Do we restrict, limit pulling money out of general funds? Especially making sure we don't play the future board playing the switcheroo with the open space fund? Or the refinancing tactic is maybe a more appropriate way of stating that? And also the the imposition of making sure that soccer field stays in our possession from future boards and, you know, to Tony's point that somebody doesn't get the bright idea down the road to sell it to generate funds to put into the, you know, maybe into another property. I mean, is that, is that something we should be concerned about? Or am I kind of missing it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Vic, I, I, part of what you just asked, Chris, is part of what I wanted to comment on a little bit, which is that the TIF district downtown and the way that that has been partially financed, that's not usual. That is not usual.
I know.
Not at all, you know, and I will say philosophically, and as I have all along here, I do not believe that we as the village should be fronting money that way. I don't think, you know, basically, the downtown TIF district already, if you will, needs to pay back open space funds, needs to pay back general funds, but that cash, we've got other financial things that those things need to be used for and or held, held in, you know, for different kinds of rainy days, if you will. So philosophically, I do not see this as that we are going to be haunting money. That happened in 2008 because of a constellation of other different things. So philosophically, I'm not in favor of that. I, that budget there, that's required, Lee, call me out on this. Lee and Denise and I had some conversations also about trying to put some framework into place for being able to forecast if and when developers do come to us. But that, we have to have a cap on that. So there has to be a number out there. But that in no way obligates us, and I agree philosophically, we want to be able to figure out a pay as you go or a way to be able to finance this outside of village croppers.
You're looking for me. The answer is you must have a cap. And you can't exceed that, accept that it's allowed to increase by the cost of living, which is nominal. But it does not obligate you to spend any one of those dollars.
I understand that point. My my point is I don't want a future board to go ahead and spend those dollars. So that's really my concern, maybe the, maybe more of a Vic question. I mean, is that something we can, we can literally, you know, put into the ordinance coding or wording, whatever that says? We're just not spending general funds or open space funds or we're not selling that soccer field to help fund this thing.
First, the the TIF district neither can or cannot dictate how general funds are spent. That's a separate matter. It's not within the purview of the TIF Act or the ordinance that would occur from that. The the village board each year makes its own budget and makes the determinations on that. And one board can't really, you know, aside from where it is statutorily permitted to bind the village by contract or otherwise, each year, each board has the ability to go whatever direction it wants with its budget. As far as the open space property, the village could convey some interest to a third party that would effectively prevent any sale of the property. But that is a matter that the board should take with some circumspection because there may be another 2008 combined with another pandemic and whatever we think we've seen as the bad times, maybe even worse. And that may be the, you know, the the life preserver that the village ultimately needs. Who's to say? I'm not one to, but I would say that if you're going to be conveying an interest that will encumber this property in a absolute way, then you will have tied the hands of a future board in the event they ever need it. Now, that's a a policy choice that this board or a future board could make. And that could be permanently binding on the village. That has not been a policy choice made to date.
Bill, can I just ask one question? This is Tony. Why was, why was that put in the TIF? Why is that parcel in the TIF at all? It can't be developed or it shouldn't be developed. It doesn't have assessed value because it's taxable. It has no value to the school district or the library. Why is it in the TIF?
We don't know whether or not it would impede the extension of the Illinois Route 53. We don't know what the future holds for that property. It is contiguous. It allows for the 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 parcel that exists directly east of Menards to be included, and therefore it allows for the potential capture, not potential capture of of increment of that was future development.
Do we know who owns that parcel, the one that ends in pin 5002?
Not off the top of our heads. We do have the the information because each and every one of those parcels and property within 750 feet of these has been provided notice, and that goes to the property owner.
Other comments at this point from the board? Jenny, you've been quiet.
Yeah, I think everyone knows I'm, I'm not a fan of TIFs in general. I, I, I just bristle that this is even considered a blighted area. I think it is. I think a house being 35 years old does not make it blighted. I know plenty of homes 100 years old that are well maintained. blighted. I know plenty of homes 100 years old that are, are well maintained. It's also, this property is adjacent to one of the most successful Menards in the entire country. I believe if we had this conversation next year after a potential dog business is in Geymour's, we wouldn't even be having this conversation because I'm hoping by having, rather than a landscaping company at Geymour's, we're going to have an incentive for that owner of that, that developer to clean up that property because people are going to be coming in and dropping off their pets. So I, I don't like TIFs for their tax implications. And I, I really, I don't, I think this, we're trying to push this through this year because for this year it qualifies with these blighted issues, but I think Long Grove has a long history of being patient for the right development. And I, I, I don't, I don't believe we, we should have this tip. So that's how I've always felt. So that's, that's my comment.
Thanks. Thanks, Jenny. I appreciate it.
Bill, can I ask one other question?
Sure, Tony.
The assessed value, you'll get this in writing, was, was the decline in assessed value a decision reached by the assessor on his own? Or was he encouraged by well documented, well appointed lawyers who sought appeals to each of the assessments, to each of the appraisals or assessments for those? Because I've seen properties going down in their assessment, not because of their intrinsic value, but because somebody pushed very hard on the assessor. So I'd love to know whether anybody knows that. If not, we'll try to find out. Because that would sort of color the view that these have been declining assessments sort of organically as opposed to by administrative fiat. So that's all I have.
Don't know the answer to that, but.
I'm sure not.
Yep.
Do we know what, what the property taxes are for Geymour? I mean, I, I know it's public. I just wondered if anybody has it in their, in their notes or knows offhand.
We have the assessed value for each of the parcels within the district. I don't have them to display or to read off. It's in the.
They, they can be, they can be shared, Rita, because Denise has, has started with pin by pin on that.
Right.
So they're probably not at, at fingertips, but certainly within, between now and two weeks from now, they could be shared.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I can look it up too. You know, we've got, we've got the pins on this paperwork, right?
Right.
Yes.
It's in the redevelopment plan.
Right, right. Okay.
So are we, are we at a point?
Just an FYI, the past year, Geimer paid about $66,000 in taxes, according to the tax bills.
Thanks, Vic. That was quick.
Thank you. There's a total of 216,000 in paid tax bills of the, the properties gathered, together for this.
So Geymour's is about 30% by that rendering.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Are we at a point to stop here? And I know we have the, in two weeks from now, we have the meeting. We're going to provide the written feedback from the questions that we got. The, the period of time between now and then is to take into consideration the things that we've heard tonight to think about it more before we make a vote on this, one way or the other. But are we at that point to, to bring the meeting to a close? And then we'll have that meeting in two weeks to, to review where we're at. This will be formally on the docket for approval. But does anyone else have any other, you know, from the board here, any other thoughts they want to share? Any comments or, or is there, are we at a kind of a, a conclusion point here for tonight's meeting?
Will we get copies of the questions and answers?
Everybody but you, Rita.
Okay.
Yes, we'll get it all, so.
Send them to you first, Rita.
Doesn't make any difference, either way.
If, if we are at a point that I would look for a roll call motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by, by Trustee O'Connor, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee O'Reilly. It's a roll call. Amy, are you still there?
I am. Trustee Misha.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritsma.
Hi.
And Trustee Brozki.
Yes.
All right, all eyes. The, the meeting's adjourned. Happy holidays, everyone. Enjoy it. Mine's the only one that's very festive tonight, right? So.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.